We're on, we're live now.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Uh, start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Will call the roll, Nora?
Mr. Berkowitz?
Here.
Mr. Perique?
Yes.
Mr. Ready?
Present.
Chairman Ira Kane?
Present.
We also have with us our board attorney, Mr. King.
Present.
And at this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and see none. I guess we can go right into case 2056, Nekki Mahmudi, 35 Troy Road. See variance to legalize the front porch, legalize the front walk, install the front pad and walk, construct an open deck with stairs and driveways, et cetera, et cetera. Want to please come forward? Have we, have we heard this case before or was it just carried?
No, we, we started, uh...
We did. Were both of you sworn prior?
Uh, yes, at the prior meeting.
Okay. Then you're still under oath and you understand, you tell the truth.
You can sit down.
Excuse me.
And sir, were you sworn as well? Is he gonna provide testimony?
No.
Okay.
You still sitting, you just can't talk.
Yeah, nuts and hands. Oh, okay, well, we have been, they, okay, so, um, I guess you had to provide some updated
information from the last meeting?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So what do you have for us?
Uh, we removed the paper patio in the back, uh, to be removed.
Okay.
And also, we shortened the front driveway for about 400 square feet.
Okay.
And the back driveway is just, yeah, the sidewalk we removed in the back, um, was about 162 square feet going around from the back wooden proposed deck to the front of the house, uh, where the driveway was going, at the front of the steps.
Okay.
With the driveway in the back, all we did was just straighten out the edges because they were kind of flared.
Okay.
And Nora, these, these are the, um, updated, um, changes.
That is the updated changes.
So what we have in the packet are the, um, updated...
That's correct.
Um, amendment.
Okay, so your side yard shed is 3.8, rear shed is one foot. What's behind you, a house or a...
Uh, yes, there's houses all around, so there's a house to the right, uh, where the shed is.
Right.
And...
Have you had, have you had any discussions with your neighbors about the, the position of the shed?
Yes.
Nobody has any problems?
No.
Okay. All righty. And, um, the open decks, you're asking for an additional 3% building coverage, you're asking for an additional half a percent impervious coverage, that's the big one. What is, you're in an R3 zone. Do you have a conforming lot?
It's a flag lot.
It's a flag lot? So you don't even have a con...
Well, you deserve it.
Can you tell the width of this? 75 by 150, that's not a conforming lot.
No.
So if they had a conforming lot, they would have 100 by 150, so they have 12,750 versus 15,000. So that, that's why the...
11,250.
What's that?
It looks like on the survey, it says 11,250.
11,250? Okay, maybe my math is good. You're right, you're right, you're right.
It's just written very soon.
You know, you're right. I just did that real quick. Can't, can't do that without an imaging machine anymore. Uh, any questions by the board?
Nope.
I'm not sure what, what they're proposing, the changes is, what is, what is it gonna look like again? Did you do anything to...
What's it gonna look like?
Well, I may have your ser, your proposed survey for what you wanted to do, but now you've changed some of that.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm questioning, what's it gonna look like?
Uh, pretty much asphalt and then, uh, just papers. I'm not sure.
If you look at the two surveys compared, put next to each other, Bernie?
Yes.
You can see the, you can see the differences.
No, but I thought he said he was not gonna, he was picking up a patio and changing the driveway, so that...
Yeah, he is, on the previous survey, uh, just the driveway in the back of the house with garages, it was kind of flared in and they came out, so we just straightened that out.
Okay.
And on the front, it, the driveway came all the way up to the steps, whereas we pulled that a little bit more in and we added just a sidewalk going to the front of the steps.
Okay.
And around the back, uh, from the deck to the front where the steps are, we have, we have removed that sidewalk.
Oh, okay. So, Mr. Ready, any questions?
That should, that should lessen their overall coverage, yeah.
Okay, see any questions?
No, I'm okay.
We don't, we don't know what that, what that, what the new coverage number is then.
Yes, we do.
Or it should be less.
No, it's, well, actually, you're, you have the older one, so you're...
It's in the, it's in the new thing here.
This is the one, this is revised?
It went from 48.89 to 42.95. Okay. So he's down 6%.
Yeah, that was, that's kind of what I was trying to get.
In fact, you had it on this, you had your mark, so that's the number that went down.
Yeah, okay.
What, what is the purpose of this expansion?
Expansion? Uh, well, we have a big family, I just, I'm, you know, married and I, I'm on a board with a kid, so, and then I also have my brothers getting married and we're all just trying to live together, you know?
Oh.
A big family. I'm sure, you know, you guys have seen it.
Yes. More and more. Uh, I'll state for, for the record, there are no members of the public here this evening, so I will not ask for questions or comments from members of the public. Is there nothing else you'd like to add, is there?
No, sir.
Um, someone like to make a recommendation as to what, why we should do this?
Yeah, you know, it is for the benefit of the family and it's a hardship if they want to accommodate the needs of the family, so I'm in favor of this.
My second? We need a resolution, somebody want to frame a resolution, Casey?
Yeah, I, I make a motion to approve, uh, application 20.56 with, uh, the updated, uh, new plan and the reduction in the impervious coverage.
Is there a second, second, Eddie? Any discussion, Nora call the roll.
Yes.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Perique?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Chairman Ira Kane?
Yes. The result is a variance is granted, we memorialize this at our next meeting, which is in, you know, you can have, you can have a read. All right, it'll, this'll be ready for next week, so once that happens, then you're ready to fly, enjoy.
You look very familiar, where do I know you from?
I work in the pharmacy, roughly.
Oh, of course, of course, of course!
Thank you, sir.
Take care now.
There, which pharmacy?
You guys have a good night.
She works at Walgreens, she works in the pharmacy department at Walgreens. Oh, I knew I recognized her.
I saw her just recently, but I didn't recognize, you know?
Oh, I, well, I remember her, I remember her.
Which is your address? Okay, I did, there wasn't enough time to mail this to you, so I'm giving it to you right now, I don't know if engineering sent that to you or not.
A little late night, huh?
I'm going to, uh...
Yeah, now we're going to wait 20 minutes.
Uh, adjourn the special meeting?
Some, second.
Want a favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Yep.
It's 7:30.
Yes, it is, go ahead.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Since we already did the pledge of allegiance at the special meeting, we will, uh, suspend that for this meeting and Nora, you can call the roll.
Berkowitz?
Here.
Ready?
Present.
Perique?
Here.
Ira Kane?
Present.
We also have with us our board attorney, uh, Mr. King.
Present.
Is there any member of the public has any business to be brought to this board that's not on this evening's agenda? Hear none, see none. Okay, we got some resolutions, Fazalari?
The resolutions, uh, they're...
Yeah, no resolutions.
No resolutions, okay.
No resolutions, sorry, we'll do, uh, that one next week.
Suspend that? You have no resolutions, right?
Yeah, we're moving right into applications.
Okay, and, um...
It's not locked, you just had to pull it open.
What, ma'am, what's your name? Patel?
Second case.
Is there a, um, Yur, Turby, why?
I think she's walking in right now.
Okay.
One, uh, the next application is here, 2134.
Okay, let's call ca, uh, application 2134, Nealan Kumar Patel, 33 Flemington Drive. See variance to construct a shed.
Uh, who's gonna come up to the microphone, who's gonna, uh, provide testimony, you sir?
Sorry, I don't know.
Are you gonna provide testimony?
You both gonna talk or just one?
Both or just one, who's gonna talk? He is, raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got? And for the record, you're the owner of the subject property and you're Mr. Patel, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you, you're sworn, you have a seat.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you have a corner lot.
Yes, sir.
You're looking to put a shed alongside your dwelling.
Yes, sir.
And it requires a 25-foot setback and you're requesting a 14-foot setback. I am looking at, do you have a fence there?
Yeah.
Chain link, so it's gonna be behind the chain link fence?
Yeah, it's my, my problem.
And the size of the shed is?
I think, eight by 10.
Eight by 10, so you don't need a building permit for that? And the reason you need a shed is for yard equipment, toys, bicycles, things like that?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, and it's only gonna be a standard height shed, right? It's not gonna be...
Yeah, maybe 10, 10-foot high?
10-foot? Nah, I don't think it's 10, probably like 8-foot high, or 7 or 8, 7 or 8, okay, all right. Any questions by the board?
Yeah, what, what it is going to say down, are you making a pad or something?
Uh, actually, I, I put the concrete, so that way it's not gonna be pushed down when I put my mo, loan mover or any heavy stuff inside, so...
Is it a concrete, whole concrete or only fittings are concrete?
Just the, just the bottom is concrete, so on the top of that I will put my shed.
Like impervious coverage, kind of?
That's already covered by the building. Any questions, Bernie?
No, I'm good, you answered all right questions.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given? I hear none and see none. Uh, there's nothing else you'd like to add, right? No? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. Uh, it's, this is a de minimis request and, and the applicant is forced to deal with the front yard setback because of the corner lot, so somebody frame a resolution?
Yeah, an application, uh, 2134, um, I move that we grant the, the variance request of the C variance to construct a shed pursuant to the application.
Second, Eddie.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Persa, oh, sorry, Perique?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes. Result's a variance is granted, you have a resolution?
Yes.
The, the resolution will be ready next week, we will approve it and then you'll be free to get, come and get your permits, okay?
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thank you so much.
All right, it's very nice meeting you, have a nice evening.
Yep.
And is that Patricia over there?
Mm-hmm.
Patricia? Turby, you can come forward. Is that calling application 20...
Oh, that, no, you know what, that, she's 2143.
2125?
No, not that one.
You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
No, what?
She's not the...
No, she's the last application.
Oh, she's, oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize, I was wrong about that.
Oh, okay, so which app, what applicant is she?
2135 is next.
1135 is next, okay. Basha? Mr. Basha?
Sir, you raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes, sir.
And thank you, you're sworn, you have a seat, please.
So you're looking to construct a 308-square-foot open roofed structure over an existing patio. Would that be like a, um, portico, not portico, sure, what do you call it?
Just a roof or, I, I have a backyard patio.
Okay, all right.
I'm just putting a roof over it, so that...
Is it a pre-built, like you get from Costco, it comes in a box?
No, 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 yeah.
So it's ac, it's actually a roof, but no sides?
Yeah, no sides. Instead of a awning, I'm planning to put on a...
It's over an existing patio?
It's over an existing patio, yeah.
So why do, uh, so you need building coverage?
And, uh...
In a small amount of impervious coverage?
Mm-hmm.
Which are pretty de minimis.
Uh, on the coverage, uh, I applied for a swimming pool permit, but I am planning to go against it, I don't want a pool now.
He's withdrawn his permit for the pool, so that is impervious.
Oh, so we don't have an impervious issue anymore?
It doesn't seem like it.
Okay, so the rule, you, you, the rule, the pool was proposed, but you're not gonna do that?
No, because I didn't get my electrical permit approved yet, so I'm going against it, not to go with the pool.
Okay, so, uh, basically you have a de minimis request here, a very small amount of building coverage increase, and I guess there's no impervious coverage increase because you're just covering an existing patio, is that correct?
Yes, yes, correct, sir.
Okay. Uh, any other questions by the board?
Is, is the size of the roof is same as the patio or are you making it bigger?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And this, the engineering report, uh, do you comply with this one? Is there a...
Yes, I see that, uh, I think they have considered that I'm going to have a pool.
Oh, okay. Now, now there's no pool?
No, I didn't put a pool yet.
Okay, then, then it doesn't, okay.
Okay, um, any members of the public have any questions of this witness? I hear none and see none, there's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No, sir, thank you.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none, once again, this is a de minimis request and, uh, I would like if someone could frame a resolution so we could move on.
I can do it. Application 21:35, Usman Basha, 464 Vale Road, Block 457, Lot 4, Zone R-D-S-T, to issue or grant a C variance to construct an open roofed structure over the existing patio contrary to section 430-35, Columns 10 and 13.
Second, Casey.
Any discussion? Nora, please call the roll.
Berkowitz?
Yeah.
Excuse me, yes.
Perique?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes. Result is the variance is granted, uh, we'll memorialize this next week and you'll be able to free, be free to proceed, okay? Enjoy.
Thank you.
You have a good night.
Which one should I do next?
Might as well go back to the first one.
Okay.
2125.
Application 2125, uh, Yurby, please come forward.
Oh, will both of you provide testimony or you're just one person? Okay, both, both of you raise your right hands, do you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for, and for the record, Patricia and you're...
Karina, Karina White-Hervey.
Okay, and that's Karina with a C. You're sworn, you may sit.
Okay, so, you would like to construct a patio, a walk and a gazebo. You're proposing a three-foot setback on side yard patio and walk, uh, a small amount of building coverage and a lot of impervious coverage, but is this... This is your old substandard lot? This is only a 40 by 100 lot in a 60 by 100 zone, that's why the, um, impervious coverage is high. And you're not requesting any side yard setbacks for the building, just the walk, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And as part of the patio, you want to put in a gazebo to cover part of the, for shade, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we already have like a cement walkway that goes to like, heads towards the backyard, but it's just like uneven and it's like old cement, so we just wanted to like remove that so it's more safe for her and that way the bricks are flattened at least.
Right.
And then like we would just like it to kind of go into like a small patio, so we, because right now it's literally just grass and it's all unrocky and even, uneven, um, so she has somewhere to sit and that's, the gazebo's for shade.
For shade, right.
Yeah.
And, um, is this patio gonna be paper, paper patio?
Paper patio, yes.
Okay, and, um, paper patios generally have a little space in between so that there's water, water will, will, um...
Yeah, like, um...
It will, it doesn't make it fully impervious?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So the only impervious part is going to be the gazebo, that...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, like I mentioned, you, you have a substandard lot, 40 by 100 lot in a 60 by 100 zone, so the rules are written for a house that's on a 60 by 100 lot, so you're starting out with only 2/3 of the property and therefore, if you had a conforming lot, you wouldn't, probably wouldn't need the impervious coverage variance.
Okay.
So, uh, and this is, this is your mom, I guess?
Oh, yeah, this is my grandmother.
Oh, your grandmother, okay.
Yeah.
So you're, you're, it's for her, uh, well-being and everything?
Yeah.
Safety and everything and being able to sit outside and et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Any questions by the board?
I just, you say it's a small patio, but it's 15 by 30 approximately?
Yeah, um, there's like, so the, the walkway is like, I, what is it, like three? Technically it's three feet, right?
Yeah.
It's three feet wide, that's already there, so we're just gonna replace that with pavers and then like when it comes back to the end of the house, we just want it to like be the same length of the house, but as far as out is whatever, you know, we're allowed, so we just wanted to like make sure that we got it approved by you guys.
Okay.
And the gazebo will be attached to the paver, so that way it's not on the ground, it's over where the patio already is.
Mr. Ready, any questions?
Not really.
Not really?
No, I'm good.
You're good. Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. Um, someone like to comment? Bernie, what do you think? What's, what's the good thing about it?
Well, I think it provides, uh, more safety for the, the owner to, to get a better property, uh, and, uh, we're just talking about, uh, building coverage now, I think, or impervious coverage. And that's really, not that much more than what's there, 3%. So I'm, I'm the favorite.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, just one more thing, we also just recently got the, the siding redone, so like if it, as far as like, I guess like retail is concerned and, and housing, like, it would just make the house look nicer.
So you're improving, you're improving the house and...
Yeah, 'cause our property shares a lot with Persipony, 'cause the, the Persipony parking lot's right next door, so, um, I don't know what the actual name of the parking lot's called, but it's a parking lot right by the Chase Bank on...
Chase Bank.
North Beverly, yeah, so it would just make it look more cool size.
You're like right behind Breeders, is that where?
Yeah, we're actually right behind them.
Right behind Breeders.
Yeah.
Okay.
I saw that.
Yeah, I was, that was close, 'cause that light and sound, simultaneous.
Yep.
Um, okay, um, did I ask of anybody?
Yep.
Okay. I did, I did all that, okay, let's, um, um, someone frame a resolution?
No.
I can do it.
You'll do that? Thank you.
Application 21:25, Patashia Tarbe, 40 Washington Avenue, Block 601, Lot 17, Zor R-4, to issue or grant a C variance to construct a patio, walk and gazebo contrary to section 430-35, Columns 8, 10 and 13.
Second, Casey.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Perique?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes. Result is a variance is granted, we'll memorialize this in next week and then you'll, you still good? Still good? And you'll be free to get your papers at that point and go to the building department, have fun there.
Thank you very much.
I don't know, do you need a building permit for, maybe for the gazebo?
They went there originally and they stopped us.
They still need to, uh, get their zoning permit, so...
Yeah, probably for the gazebo you need a building permit, right?
Yeah.
Not for the patio?
No, no.
Size of a small shed, I mean, huh?
I don't know.
I don't know, but that's something you, you'll, you'll know.
Okay, so we'll get like a phone call to do the next step?
No.
No?
When you receive your resolution in the mail, then you're gonna go back to the zoning department.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you.
Once you get the resolution to get your zoning permit, then you can apply for your building permit.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Did you see the, um, comments in Facebook about the person, the building department?
You guys have a good night.
They partially roughed up the zoning department, but the building department took it.
You're welcome, have a good night, just without lightning.
Six weeks and people haven't even heard.
You know the, um, fire station, the new one?
October?
Yeah. They are, they find that, and they're giving them a hard time. They, they're not even helping them, and that's holding up an ambulance, an ambulance is supposed to go.
You know, it's not six, it's, it's, maybe one, maybe one. Ten weeks. No.
Yeah.
No, and I, and I heard if you, if you roughen them up, they say, well, we lost your application.
That's what they're doing to the fire.
Yeah. Okay, case, um, 2143.
I thought he died.
No.
No, he's, he's, he's asleep, cause he's asleep.
Angela Colmoni?
That's it, yeah.
Uh-huh, okay.
Raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board's troops help you got?
Yes.
Thank you, and you're, for the record, you're the owner of the subject property?
Yes.
You're sworn, thank you, ma'am.
So you're proposing 150 square-foot open deck with stairs and a 12-foot square foot pad, and you need a variance for 1.02 yards and cords open decks. Oh, my God. And you also have a substandard lot. Uh, I assume that you want to put this deck in for your enjoyment, for be able to sit outside, is that...
Yeah, right now, I can't.
You can't?
Wow, I have no place to go.
You have no place to go, okay. And, um, the size that you're requesting and everything is a size that makes sense. You're only asking for 153 square feet, that's not a big deck. And you also have a substandard lot, 40 by 100, oh, 40 by 110, in a zone that requires 6,000 square feet, and if you had a 6,000-square-foot piece of property, you would not be here.[1687.18]